Called a meeting, the board supervisors of King William County, August 22nd order. Ms. Branch will be calling right.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mr. Hodges.
Brother.
Mr. Garber.
Here.
Mr. Miskowski.
Here.
Chairman Moore.
Here. Gentlemen, if you join me in a moment of silence, do we have any special recognition this evening?
What are you saying?
Do.
Do.
Yeah. Getting a moment of silence with, followed by the pleasure of allegiance. Gentlemen, we have an amended agenda from what you picked up earlier this week.
Let me ask you. Mister Chair.
Yes, sir.
Item. So I didn't get there. Item thirteen in the closed session. I think the. The number eight is incorrect. Should be seven and nine according to what I would get.
Eight eight. They amended it a few years ago when it's A seven, one A seven, it's any regulation. Eight eight.
Okay, then I'm looking at the old sheet there because mine was performance and sound. And that's what I thought it should be.
Huh? That would be A four.
Okay. So what's A eight?
A eight is vice of people count.
Okay, well, I guess that would go. Motion to approve. Second.
Need further discussion?
I don't. No.
Ms. Branch.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Moore.
Hi. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have a public comment period. You're offered the opportunity of three minutes per individual, five minutes per group on non-public hearing matters, which we'll have later on this year. Anyone who would like to come up? Open the period.
And identify yourself in position.
Good evening, board members, Mister Ashcroft, Mister Hodges. I just wanted to thank you for your hard work and those difficult decisions in funding the library this year. So I wanted to give you some good news. The Upper King William summer reading program agreed from last year. The program is still running until. August thirty first, but these are the numbers as of yesterday. Last year, twenty twenty one had children of two hundred and twenty one. Current year, twenty twenty two participation rate is two sixty one, which is an increase of forty. But we're still, the program's not able to go on August thirty first. John Jack was a big help. Patrons and staff in the Upper King William branch. Thank Parks and Rec for providing the space at the ballpark. The parking lot at the library has just got big enough to be trailer or the kids there. It's great to see the county resources are working together to build a better community. Storytime at Upper King William is scheduled to start that Wednesday, September fourteenth. Request use the meeting room and study room continues to increase. Afternoon and evening use are anticipated to increase with schools being back in session as of today. So. Does anyone have any questions or concerns on where we're going with the library?
If you could mind identifying yourself from the record.
Oh, fine. Mary Schumpin.
Yes, sir.
King William resident.
All right, one of our liaisons to the Monkey Regional Library.
Yeah.
So things are going well? Everybody's happy?
Everybody's happy. Yeah, things are just motoring on along. Lots of people coming in and out.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you.
Good evening. Peter Mason, three nine two, Roanoke Trail, District Two. Couple of comments that I have about the sevillance Grotto situation. I don't want to be up here talking about it anymore than you want to hear me, hear me talking about it, but. The comments that I have over only superficially just relate to Mister Sneed and his operations. More related to the county's performance of their duties. This case involves three related but distinctly separate matters. First, there's the campground CUP application. I know that's an issue that's going to get further attention this evening, so perhaps. Some of my questions or some of the things that I'm talking about might get a little attention at that, at that point. The other two matters were the zoning and building violations that were assessed against Mister Sneed. And then the July third temporary injunction. The temporary injunction, as I understand it, was put in place to prevent Mister Sneed from using any of his unpermitted structures for the operation of his, of his business. So it really boils down to, the question really is, what's being done to resolve these violations? And as far as we know, you know, perhaps we in the community don't have all of the information, which, you know, could easily be the case, but as far as we know. Mister Sneed has done nothing to rectify any of the violations that were set up against him. And the county, as far as we know, has done nothing to assess any penalties about those violations. During the drafting of the new ordinances that were adopted at the end of last year, the community several times. Made mention of the fact that there's no point in having ordinances if you don't have an enforcement mechanism behind them. And we're, you know, happy to see that in the ordinances, there is section eighty six fifty three, which identifies. Processes that can be put in place for both civil and criminal penalties for zoning vi- zoning violations. And I encourage everybody to go back and read through that section. In particular, there's one tidbit, and I'll quote it in the first paragraph. It says, "It shall also be the duty of all officers and employees of the county to assist the enforcement officer by reporting any seeming violations in new construction, reconstruction, or land uses." So if anyone's concerned about any apparent inequity in enforcement in, as an officer of the county, you have knowledge of someone violating the ordinances. It's your duty. To tell the zoning administrator so that something can happen. And as I say, in that section, there are specified. Now, of course, it's of the discretion of, of the county, of the zoning administrator, how to apply the information that's in that section, but. The letters, the zoning violation letters were sent out in late April. It's now late August with no enforcement action. So the question is, why should anybody? You know, apply for any permit if there's never any enforcement for violations? What incentive is there to, for anybody to, to apply for any, a building permit or any zoning permit? So. That's the thing.
Hello, my name is Vic Anderson at three nine seven Roanoke Trail, also Jason Landon at the Sneed. First of all, I want to thank everybody who worked on this amendment twenty two fifty seven, the board supervisors, the planning and zoning department, and the planning board. You know, very impressed by that. But Sneed again has not even stopped or slowed down its operation. There's been, July twenty sixth, there was many cars entering and leaving his property. Like normal on the weekends, forty, fifty vehicles a day, a lot of it spending the night. We didn't even have one person fly in from New York. Pull into the driveway and notice he gets himself stuck in a ditch. This happened at four o'clock in the afternoon. We didn't go to the airport. Rented the car, you know, going to Sneed's place at four o'clock in the afternoon. He figured he's going to turn around and head back out after fifteen minutes. He was going to spend the night in. Building that was probably condemned basically by King William County. Not to be used. This happened on a regular basis. There's loud music playing again every night. Now, with the evidence that King William was fully aware of, Sneed has not stopped operating an unlicensed business providing camping entertainment and a restaurant on his property that he advertised still. He had advertised events last, this last month. For the past six years, King William has cited Sneed for these violations with zero enforcement today. By allowing this activity to continue, one of Sneed's customers. If one of Sneed's customers gets hurt or worse, who's going to be at fault? That's right, the residents, the taxpayers of King William County. Oh, by the way, if you don't want to enforce your county laws, there are plenty of state laws that are on the books too that can enforce.
Anyone else this evening?
Good evening. My name is Charles Sneed, I live at two eighty one Roanoke Trail. I had not planned on speaking tonight, but my neighbors who constantly want to bring inaccuracies and lies and. Suggested elements to you as if they are fact, as if they have traced my guests who, who have not been staying overnight. I did have a guest. Pulled his car into a ditch. He also got a wrecker to pull him out, and he was taken to the car rental place where he picked up his car. So. My neighbors constantly do this. They, they always want to bring to your attention things that they think might be true, could be true, might be true, just enough to bring them to you, and I want to apologize for them. I wish that they had more interest in their own life and not so much in mine, but I'll thank you again very much for, for, for what you do.
Anyone else? There are no one else. I'll go ahead and close the public comment period. Gentlemen, we have the consent agenda since Mister Greenwood, Mister Miskowski were absent last week. Is there anything, any questions you may have, maybe it's? Resolutions?
Uh, no.
All right, well, we're going to discuss, I'm sorry, but item resolution twenty two sixty one. Determining the rate.
Well, that resolution, as I understood it, when we left it, even before the last meeting, was that basically we are approving her to set the rate that whatever it maps out today. That we don't actually need to set the rate. We've always set it as, as kind of formality before, but with the time crunch of everything that's going on right now, the rate, the rate is just going to be what calculates out, right? And there's really, there's not, we can't change it one way or another, so we're just authorizing. Yeah.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the boards. The state reimburses the county one point two million dollars for PPTRA rate. I am going to run the books with the numbers and get the numbers as close to the one point two million as possible to use every single cent that, you know, the state allocates. I did run the book. You know, about two weeks after the West Point bills were sent, and there's a lot of changes with vehicles moving in and out of the county, and I ran it again. And at the rate of two sixty six per hundred, which you're considering, the PPTRA rate will be like twenty eight percent, give or take a tenth of a point, maybe two tenths of a point.
And, and with that. How, how? Positive are you on your feet?
Well, I think it's going to be.
Because it can hurt.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm not going to set a rate that is more than the one point two million dollars. I'm going to try, and, and like, the one point two million dollars is divided between the town and the county.
Are you, you're basing that off the assessment, correct?
Yes.
Okay, how accurate are you in the assessments? You know, West Point just went through this. I want to make sure that we're not.
Yeah.
Going to be setting or holding the bill. That we have.
Yeah.
Reduced. We want to reduce downward. It doesn't hurt.
Yeah.
Our taxpayers, however, we don't want to hurt the county itself.
Well, the PPTRA is only applied to the vehicles, not all other things, and. You know, it's set, and then. If a car is moved out of the county and we bait the bill, the PPTRA goes back into the fund that amount, and then if we supplement it, then it's applied. So that says values of cars, vehicles, and trucks, you know, is as good as we have them right now based on the information from the DMV. But if someone reports to the DMV that they moved out of the county in March of two thousand twenty two. And, but they moved out of the county in November of two thousand twenty one, I don't know that, and they're going to get a bill, and then I'll have to bait it because. The DMV will backdate move in or move out dates, but we don't know that till the next, the month that it happens.
I think we're concerned about two different sets, you know, of money. I think the PPTRA is just one pot of money, and so then that gets divided up. You know, however it needs to get divided up, and that's what we're talking about with this particular rate here.
Yeah.
You know, that, the program's going to spit out a number, and that's what it's going to be.
Yeah.
We can't move it, you can't move it, it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, I mean, they'll spin out a number, and if I said it, you know, run it at twenty eight percent, and I have an extra fifty grand, then I'll run it out, run it again at twenty eight point one percent.
And so that's what this one is setting. It's going to authorize and hurt to take that calculation, however it is, and then set the rate based on that. Now, where an inaccurate assessment, compared to this, isn't really on PPTRA. It's on reducing the rate. That's what happened now.
That's what I.
They reduced the rate based on assess, on assessment that ended up being erroneous, so that's how they've ended up losing money.
And that's what I, that's my point.
Yeah.
And so this one is set at the PPTRA rate, which is different, the setting, the, the rate that we're talking about later on with the, the actual personal profit.
So do you want me to address the second part of the question?
We'll hold on.
Let's keep it on this.
No, no.
We'll get.
Okay, yes, I.
Plenty of time.
I, in admins, Deborah Ball, who retired from the commissioner's office, who has been working, you know, part-time to enter the. Business personal tax property returns, you know, last year, this year, and for Miss Pearson for the years after she retired. Was, I hired her to enter that business personal property returns. When she started, the admin software was not working because the depreciation rates were never loaded into the system. Took about two, three or four weeks for them to enter that before we could start entering the personal property tax returns, which we have to get the town books done by the beginning of June because they bill so much earlier than the county. That left us very little time to get everything entered, let alone review the numbers. Then. In admin, which is very illogical, they carry over all the business personal property from the previous year, which is illogical because that changes every year because. Businesses acquire property, dispose of equipment, and also the depreciation rate changes because all the equipment is a year older. So we enter the personal property tax, business personal property tax returns, just like the return was filed and entered it, and on the screen that you entered it. It's a separate screen that shows all the values from the previous year. So this taxpayer was billed twice. Because, you know, why would we think it's in there from the previous year with thirty years of bright? It never was, and it wasn't on the same screen. So. I mean, I delivered the books to the town June second with the totals, and that same day I sent a comparison of the two thousand twenty one and two thousand twenty two totals. To Mister Ashcraft, Miss Richardson, to you, Mister Hodges, to Mister Warren, comparing it, and no one noticed the discrepancy until August eighth, when it was brought to my attention.
Right, no, I'm not arguing that. I was pointing out that it's different.
Yeah, so that's what happened, and I think because everyone was so focused on the increased values in vehicles and worried about that, that the other categories of personal property weren't probably given the attention that was necessary. Now, since August eighth, we have gone back and looked at all the business personal property tax returns and corrected some errors.
Yeah, that's not.
I.
I saw you earlier, so I understand how that, how that error happened, and I'm not, I'm not trying to litigate that. I was just pointing out the, the PPTRA rate that we're talking about in this resolution. Really can't.
She jumped to the other all sorts.
Yeah.
So we're good.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Excellent, Jim.
Then, motion move. I'll probably second. Any further discussion? Ms. Branch?
Mister Garber.
Hi.
Mister Miskowski.
Hi.
Mister Greenwood.
Hi.
Mister Hodges.
Hi.
Chairman Moore.
Hi. Okay, we want to go into the public hearing segment of the agenda this evening. First up is the ordinance zero seven dash twenty two to establish the property tax limits on tangible personal property for the classifications of vehicles created by House Bill one two three nine. Same rules as before. I think those rules get one, excuse me, three minutes. Groups will get five minutes. If you could please come up, state your name and your district. Now open. Ms. Branch, you stated that there was no one.
Yeah.
On Zoom. There being no one wishing to speak this evening, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on ordinance zero seven dash twenty two. I'll go ahead and open public hearing on ordinance zero eight dash twenty two, updates to the zoning ordinance.
I suppose, I suppose preliminarily we can do this, maybe, maybe not. We certainly can't pass them omnibus, so I'm wondering if, as a, just a point of order, if we want to address the ordinance for which we just closed the hearing before we open the hearing on the next ordinance.
We certainly do that.
I think that might be.
Ms. Buckhouser, if you'd come on up, back up to the podium. Okay. Questions from Ms. Buckhouser?
I think we're pretty, we've discussed this, and I'm pretty sure that everybody pretty much understands it. I don't have any questions. Do you, Bill?
The only one I have had on any of it, I go back to real estate, and we don't want to go down that road, and especially with major business, you know. Coming back later that, oh, we double billed. You know. That's, that's all I'm trying to stay away from, or, or double billing anybody for anybody. And it happened before before you, and the rain. And, and that's very difficult to get back to anywhere else than that.
Well, we need to discuss what we want to set the rate. That's the biggest thing we need to get. Get on here. Now, Ms. Buckhouser had sent an email out. A few days ago, talking about. Those grades that, that I tended to agree with, which was that if we. Set the overall rate, and I'm trying to get back to where the, the school versus general, but let me break down B.
Yeah.
But if we set the aggregate rates, and if current proposals set it at two sixty six, which is ninety nine cents. Less than the previous year, I, I would propose that we set it at, at a full dollar less than the previous year, and the memo actually outlined that it would be.
But the county.
Be less than five thousand dollars.
Yes, for the county, it'd be nineteen thousand five hundred and twenty five dollars less, and for the town, it'd be three thousand six hundred and forty one dollars less. Now, I, this is, I reran the books August sixteenth because I thought I had to give, give you a rate for the personal property tax, and I wanted a better number. And so I just thought to myself, if you lower it to two sixty five, you can say you lowered the property tax by a dollar, not almost a dollar, not ninety nine cents, a dollar, and I think. That's really good, you know, talking point for the board to say that you gave a dollar relief to the citizens of King William County. And so that's the only reason why I put that together, because the board recommended two sixty six. And so I have the AR provided those numbers also, and at the two sixty six, then the board could meet its revenue projections.
Should can.
Yes, at two sixty six, that's what the board recommended, and that meets their revenue projections. At two sixty five, the revenue would be about twenty four thousand dollars less.
And you're, you are sure of these numbers, not, not to beat it to death.
Yeah, well, that, those are the numbers, yes. I mean, we've gone back and we checked the business personal property, you know, the largest taxpayers in the county to make sure their business personal property tax returns were correct.
Which is always a big effect.
Yes, I know what I assess is not always what is paid either.
Uh, and you've discussed this, I think, with Brown already.
With.
The revenue project.
Yes, I provided them this information also. I, I just did it as an exercise. I didn't, you know, it's up to the board to decide, but I, I didn't know if anybody thought of that option. You know, another cent, a dollar, the board lowered the property tax rate a dollar. That's a great headline.
If we'd like to do that, we just will.
Yeah, yeah.
So my big question there, maybe somebody out there can, can help me out with it because. How that would fall. Between. School fund. And, uh, general.
And in all the other revenue projections at three sixty five and a dollar sixty five, that's what the rates are now. A dollar sixty five is forty five percent of three sixty five, so if the rate is two sixty five, forty five percent is a dollar nineteen for the town. Now, that's not the correct. Those are all the other numbers, how I projected it. So at two sixty five, it's a dollar nineteen for the town. That's forty five percent. At two sixty six, it's a dollar twenty for the town, which is forty five percent.
It's.
What?
You're saying it's come. Two sixty six, two sixty five, a cent will come off of the county and not the school.
Well, the, a cent will come off the county and a cent will come off one point.
Well, a cent's got to come from somewhere. We're, we're dividing this two sixty five rate has to be divided. One set has to go for all districts, including the town, and then one set's got to go to the school. So if we're taking just a penny off, we could either take a half penny off of each, or we could take a full penny off of one of the other. Those are, those are options that.
See, I'm not familiar in that, with that. I mean, all the other numbers I ran forty five percent. As a number.
So we better.
We just need to make sure. Well, right, I mean, I mean, that's, that's simple enough now that I know how that's divided up.
Yeah. So you can leave it to us two sixty five for the county and leave the town a dollar twenty?
No, because then, again, you're pulling a penny off of one, one rate of the other. Remember, we've, we've got two different rates.
Okay, the, the general fund rate.
Right, that in aggregate make three sixty five. We're still going to have, in doing this, we're still going to have an aggregate rate that equals two sixty five. That's the rate that's set. So we can do that, if we just want to pull a half penny off each set, then we do one forty five five, one nineteen fives.
Yeah.
And set it that way, and that gets you with the two sixty five without pulling one penny off, you know, schools or one penny off of county share of the half penny.
Yeah. And when I ran these numbers, the other problem was fixed. Yeah, the big error with the town. Was fixed when I ran these numbers.
Okay.
Okay.
What were those numbers again that, that you just gave?
Dollar nineteen fifty on the general one.
Okay, I got you.
I didn't, dollar fifty five fifty on the.
Okay, I didn't pick up the.
Okay. I was going to say, are there any objections over there?
Yeah.
Everyone good?
Good.
Okay, do we have to modify this ordinance?
You have to fill it in.
Yeah, I was going to say it's blank, so we just need to adapt it with those. This is innocent. I made the numbers. I made the numbers. Mr. Chairman, I'll move adoption of ordinance zero seven dash twenty-two, setting the rate for the general fund at a dollar nineteen fifty, setting the rate for the special school fund levy at a dollar forty-five. Or say.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any further discussion? Everyone satisfied?
Yes.
Ms. Branch?
Ms. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodge.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Chairman Moore.
Hi.
So it's going to be two sixty-five, dollar nineteen fifty?
Yeah, dollar nineteen fifty when you pay by town residents and and county and a dollar forty-five fifty to districts two to five.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
I'm saying one nineteen five.
For the town?
Yeah, two sixty. But I mean, then we're saying fifteen, which is why I have said it's really one nineteen five.
Yeah. I'm talking to laptop.
Okay, we're going to move into the public hearing now. We're ordinance zero eight dash twenty-two, updates to the zoning ordinance.
Okay, so the planning commission held a public hearing on August ninth. They did elect to table a few of the items under the matrix for permitted uses for special events, modifications of the lot area regulations, setbacks for accessory buildings and structures to be located in the front yard and the RPA. Clarifying the wording and measurements from the central line of thirty and three sixty. Review a section of the TCO for changes to building exteriors and agricultural private use, the buffering. Sections of the ordinance pertaining to landscaping and the industry definitions. So what they did recommend approval on are the definitions of special events private, special events public, special events charity or religious. Definition to replace wayside stands with temporary sales, temporary stands, and temporary open air stands for seasonal sales. Also, under section eighty-six, one ten, under the table of minimum side area and dimension regulations, to add the minimum lot size area and setbacks do not apply to public utility parcels owned or operated by the county. Also, under eighty-six, one twelve modifications to the lot area and regulations, accessory buildings and structures shall not be located on the front yard that is in a front yard less than five acres. One accessory building may be constructed in the front yard in a lot that is five acres or more, provided that the requirements for the front yard setbacks and Article six are met, and the size of the accessory structure does not exceed fifty percent of the first floor of the main dwelling and not located directly in front of the primary dwelling and in conformity with the other applicable provisions of the ordinance. And any lots where the rear side yards are in the RPA, accessory buildings and structures may be located in the front yard in order to be located out of the resource protection area. So the wording was changed to only allow one accessory building in front. Under the matrix, under the heading of civic, they elected to separate the public water and sewer system, make no changes to the public sewer system, and under the public water system, allow it to be permitted by right in all zoning districts. It was in the previous ordinance, it got taken out of the AC and the RR. So we were adding it to be permitted by right in the AC and the RR, and that would make it permissible in all the districts. Under eighty-six, one forty, under the use matrix, under the heading civic, all water towers by right in the AC and RR zoning districts had been taken out. We're putting it back in. Eighty-six, one fifty-four, accessory dwelling units to it. It's they do not have to get a CUP if it's eight hundred square feet or less. But the change, they could apply for CUP if they wanted to make it larger. Kettles to be located behind the primary residence or if it's on a vacant parcel to meet the front setback requirements. This does not apply on parcels of land that are ten acre, ten acres or more in the AC district. Under exempt subdivisions, we did not allow for them to do an additional division. We are now allowing them to do a family division on parcels and on parcels fifty acres or more. They could divide again if they wanted to. Under cluster, the only change is they went from thirty thousand square feet to forty thousand square feet for lots that were not served by public water or public sewer. And under the major subdivisions, eighty-six, four sixty, they added that driveways must have a concrete apron that meets feet-out standards, and the remainder of the driveway must consist of concrete or an asphalt.
Any questions, Jim?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may. So the county is physically exempt from the zoning ordinances. Is that normally done?
Not not the ordinancees per se, but on that particular section, it is talking about public utility parcels. So if the the county had a utility parcel, that would exempt them from the setbacks, which in some areas are seventy-five feet and twenty-five and fifty from the rear. They would be exempt from from the setbacks and so forth.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I have one more. Kettles. So someone can build a kennel on a vacant lot, they meet the setbacks.
The front setbacks.
Then three years down the road, they just decide to build a house on this parcel. Do they? Are they grandfathered? Do they have to stare it down? What happens?
It's supposed to be behind the primary residence.
So it has to be before they can get a building permitted, they have to disperse.
They would need to relocate it.
Okay, that's all.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Grant. All right, go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance zero eight dash twenty-two, updates to zoning ordinances. Again, same rules, single gets three minutes, a group five minutes. Now, welcome. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, ordinance zero eight dash twenty-two. Next up, we have ordinance zero nine dash twenty-two to amend the King William County Code, Chapter thirty-four, five, prevention and protection.
We're going to dispose of the previous order. They have to.
Motion, motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. We have a motion to approve zero eight dash twenty-two. May I have a second?
Do it. Does that make it?
Yeah.
Approved and seconded. Ms. Branch?
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Chairman Moore.
Hi. Okay. Now we'll talk about ordinance zero nine dash twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. McRoberts, tonight, your third public hearing is an ordinance amendment to the the King William County Code, Chapter thirty-four, which deals with fire prevention and protection. This was presented to you at a previous work session, and it really makes three major mod or three modifications to the ordinance. One, it defines the fire companies that are going to be affected by it in the county. It also complies with the provisions of our of the Virginia statewide fire prevention code. And it would retain the the method of of hiring a a fire official or using a fire official who shall be certified fire marshal within the Commonwealth of Virginia. And then third is permissive language, which would allow you to implement permitting, operation permits, if you chose to do so, and also to set any fee, which you would which you would have to do by resolution. The end result of this is that the the fee that has been currently charged will be will go away unless you choose to set one. And the permitting process would be defined through a a brochure that was discussed at the last meeting that is optional in in different situations. So that is where we are with this special chairman. Have any questions?
And sort of the fee that we had discussed that can be changed at a future date, it becomes a
Absolutely.
workflow that.
It's permissive language. You can set the fee, take it away anytime you want.
It's zero.
It'll be zero. Once you adopt this language and you've already approved this, it is it, it'll be zero effective as of tonight.
Further questions before we open up?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd just like to thank everybody that was involved in this. I think it's something that everybody can work with, and I think we're all in agreement about the fees. I think that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for zero nine dash twenty-two. Seeing no one wishing to speak, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Gentlemen, if I could get a motion to approve ordinance zero nine dash twenty-two.
So move second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, Ms. Branch?
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Moore.
Hi. Under all business, we're going to talk about, Mr. Wolf's going to come up, talk to us a little bit about the historical society IT usage services agreement.
Evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
All right, so before you, we have the technology services agreement that has been agreed upon by both parties, the county and the historical society. I won't read it all to you as unless you have any questions or concerns. Here to answer those for you.
And this trickles down to the museum as well?
It does. The especially regarding the card swipe and security cameras that are in place.
I have a side question, but when do you expect this system to be? Are we are we on contract and we're still working on?
So the RFP finished Friday afternoon, we received the bids. So it's a matter now of being able to sit down and go through them. So we're hoping to make a decision by the end of this week and then reach out to those company or that company. And we've heard as many as three to twenty weeks of lead time for equipment, so it depends on who wins the bid.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Who's going to manage?
You're all. From the cards themselves to the sheriff, the sheriff's office will manage all of the cards for his building. And then between myself and Nita with HR, we will manage for the remaining buildings.
And I'm sure you've thought about did that need to have an access? If they get a call.
Oh, absolutely.
So.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Now we're into the water revisions, resolution twenty-two fifty-nine. Mr. McRoberts, if you kind of set us up on this one, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. These three resolutions relate to your resolution twenty-two dash fifty-nine, which you adopted at your last regular meeting. It contained some language that had been recommended by the planning commission that was apparently included in it as an oversight in your resolution. It was not discussed or based upon my interviews with members of the board that were intended. So therefore, in order to get back to that, there are two resolutions that are preliminary. One is to reconsider the adoption of that resolution, which is a Roberts Rules, rules of procedure of this board that simply takes it sort of from a decided matter and puts it really back on the table. The second resolution rescends the prior resolution, which is a proper, again, rules of procedure step to take a former resolution that's been adopted and rescinded. And the third one is a revised version of the resolution you adopted last time. So there are three before you. If you can adopt them one at a time, I would appreciate it. And if there are any questions, please let me.
Mr. Chair, I did have I did have just one question on on this parliamentary procedure, because the resolution reconsider, it it has to, I know it has to come from the prevailing side, right? So why the four of us have to make the motion? Now, Mr. Greenwood, from from the nonprevaling side, can he second, can he participate in the vote?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure that we hit all of those steps correctly. I know the initial motion had to come from one of the four of us. I didn't know where what there is.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then I'll move adoption of resolution twenty-two dash sixty-eight to reconsider.
Second.
Motion is made properly seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Branch, okay?
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Chairman Moore.
Hi. Next up, we have resolution twenty-two sixty-nine.
Which I'll move approval of, Mr. Chairman.
Should I? Properly moved and seconded. Ms. Branch?
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Chairman Moore.
Hi. And finally, resolution twenty-two fifty-nine R.
Which I'll also make approval of, Mr. Chairman. So.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Branch?
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Chairman Moore.
Hi. All right, moving into new business this evening.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Did we take action on on historical society agreement?
Was was actually needed. It was presented as.
It wasn't in a resolution, just said.
Something to vote on, so.
Did you want something?
Well, I think I think anytime we enter into an agreement with another body, there should be, there should be an action.
But we need just authorized to prove.
Then I'll make a motion, authorize, and then agreement be executed.
Thank you.
Moving seconded, Ms. Branch?
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Moore.
Hi.
Thanks.
All right, under new business, we're going to bring up resolution twenty-two sixty-four, personnel policies and procedures. Ms. McIntyre.
Good evening. I bring to you tonight staff request approval of the resolution twenty-two sixty-four for the grievance policy. We have worked with Mr. McRoberts and Ms. Alejandra with his firm, who is a labor attorney as well, to update our grievance policy, to bring it in line with some changes that were made with the Code of Virginia, to bring it up to a more contemporary standard as well. A summary of the changes that we included the additional categories to define all the categories of discrimination per Virginia code that was updated. We removed the panel hearing from the final step. We found that that was kind of outdated, and Ms. Alejandra recommended that we go with the more contemporary thought that you would use a grievance officer who is assigned by the Supreme Court of Virginia if you actually get to that step.
And with that, so the rest of the board, not all of them were in a short meeting we had, but there is a two thousand dollar charge per, but we've only had what I think one
One that I'm aware of.
That we've had, so it's not, it doesn't seem like a big deal, but it would be a a charge to that.
Yeah, there there is a charge, and it's on the county to to pay. It does, however, ensure that by using this hearing officer, that we have someone who is well-buried in policy procedure. And it makes it, it removes any kind of favoritism that may come from having the panel, from having to select members from outside that are not familiar with government, so it just makes it more of a fair process.
It's truly a neutral party. Whereas the panel is selected by the parties, including the county.
Right. So I'm good, but I just wanted everybody to know that there where the panel might be free with your own folks, this one, it probably will be better, but it is, there is a cost.
Do they have a response time? They're mandated to?
That there is within the policy, there's that number of days. Within five working days. I believe they have to get back to you. And then we have twenty days in order to set those to hearing, have it done. There's timelines for all of this laid out in the policy that every party has to.
I just think good.
Correct, correct. And then we also included language in the grievance policy that had previously been missing, that all meetings must take place in person for all stuff.
Absolutely no Zoom, otherwise.
I would say if there's another public health emergency that requires something like that, that would be agreed to by all parties.
I agree with that second part, agreed to by all parties.
Right.
Did y'all guys get this in your packet? I don't have.
Yes, it had previously been in consent.
Oh.
It's actually page.
She explained it well.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Okay, if I could get a motion to approve resolution twenty-two sixty-four.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-two sixty-four.
Move and seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Branch?
Mr. Garber. Mr. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Chairman Moore.
Aye. Mr. Hodges, Gordian proposal sounds like the Star Trek episode.
Now? New frontiers. So county staff and VIPSa director David Magnet have been discussing the VIPSa transfer station, the expansion with a group called Gordian. Gordian manages a job order contracting program for the Virginia Department of General Services. And basically, it's, it works kind of like Eva and these other cooperative bidding that they've got a list of contractors that have already gone through procurement and they work with them. And for any project we have, they've got certain stipulations that it has to move, has to meet. But as long as it does, then they can take off running with the project. And it seemed like this was a good candidate for that. And one of the stipulations would be that the project's design and construction would fall under $500,000. Just a general discussion, we were thinking it might not do that, but they still had, Gordian had a group Centennial Contractors Enterprises come out, walk the VIPSa transfer station site. And they said, you know what, even if it's going to be over, we'll still provide you a scope costs so you can use that to compare and we'll see where we fall. And ended up that they fell in the 425 to 450,000 dollar range and says we can do the project. So that's what we're asking, provided earlier in your agenda packet was the rough order of magnitude. So that was a general scoping, just to get that cost. And just today, it was just sent out to you, a draft of the budget lines of that proposal. I had asked for a couple of small revisions, all the numbers would be the same. I just asked for a revision of the detail or the general scope to include not just evaluation of the site, but design of the site. If you dug into the numbers, it did include design and drawings, it just didn't say in the small scope. And also, it was written initially, it was thought by Gordian that it would be a contract with VIPSa. And I clarified that it would be a contract with the county. So they've made those changes and in fact, just got them to me late this afternoon. So we do now have the proposal that's correct. You do not have it yet. But I would ask that if you are in agreement with this direction, that you would authorize Mr. Ashcraft to sign the agreement with Gordian. And if you have any questions about the project specifically, as well as their program, I believe Mr. Chuck Sexton of Gordian is available on Zoom.
I think I got more a question or you than that. Sure. How's this going to eliminate the traffic issue?
So this would be the first part of it. This whole proposal is to have a traffic loop that goes around. So right now, you come in and it's a dead end. You have to turn around. If you have a trailer, you've got to turn back in. And that cuts into all of the waiting space that you would have otherwise have by putting a loop going around and that would increase, greatly increase your queue. It would also allow for drivers to drive front end without having to do a pinpoint turn with the trailer. But front end and a slight backup to be able to toss into the dumpster as well as the wraparound. So you could, just like at the other stations, throw in the side. Mr. Magnet used as an example, the Matthews transfer station, as it's set up exactly like what we're proposing here. And he said that they, their traffic's not an issue. But it's also in the, weighing in the back of our minds that say, rather than having, also putting into this an extended turn lane, we're thinking that we've already started discussing, at least with the schools, something to do with their, their bus depot, their bus garage and moving of that. So in a future year, not too far off, we could use where they've got their bus depot right now as an entrance and wrap back in there as well.
And are we sure that would match his concept?
Yes.
You would?
It hasn't been. I mean, design hasn't been drawn of it, but it's got plenty of space. We've discussed it with David Magnet engineers.
Could we maybe ask for an aerial of the Matthews site if they should have one?
Sure.
Would be great to kind of compare.
And was Matthews a problem?
Now that I don't know. They don't have central garage right next to them.
That's what I'm getting at. They may have not had a problem again, but they could easily say that there's not.
I also, I think they also, that might be their only site. They have their own issues, I think you said, with wetlands around it. Yes.
Mr. Hodges, if I may, you mentioned trailers. Is this going to be, maybe has some designated stop points for trailers reserved for them? Because they can occupy a whole lot of time on those things.
We could potentially do that. We could also look in. I think it was initially proposed before we knew how expensive this was going to be. Maybe at the same time, we could improve Fworth and direct more trailers there or trailers that don't feel comfortable going to Fworth now would. But that's not part of this proposal yet.
How much larger is this foot footprint than what we have now? We're just more trying to utilize what we have there. Is that what we're doing with this? Or is this footprint a whole lot larger?
It's not a whole lot larger. It's just better access to it and more queuing. Basically, instead of us.
We're making a loop so we can get out of, get in and out of.
And not going into the back lot that is, if the show before would be more work than, well, it might be more work than it's worth. But this was seen as the most expedient and.
Is the arrow loop, the loop that you're talking?
Are you talking about the back of the memo sheet?
Well, on the, there's the left side and the back of the bottom. This diagram. This here, is this what the loop would be? Okay. And I did. And I did notice, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is this proposal does not include stormwater.
It does. It does not, it includes.
Set it in there somewhere.
In the construction, stormwater, stormwater conveyance, stormwater storage not currently included. So what they're thinking is that they can take care of stormwater with culverts and drains, directing it and not having to do a pond.
I was wondering, like you said, it shows the footprint and as I can tell from the drawing, it does show property lines. This is our original property line, but this, it doesn't include any of the 10 acres that we got extra. It looks like it just barely touches, it goes same exact.
Correct.
Parcel, so we're not, so that fits right in there. That's good.
But it is, you know, potential to look at, you know, could we stick another dumpster there since there is space? But not trying to sit our whole station back there.
Right. And that's the two concrete pads you have on that back loop. Is that for maybe for putting dumpsters on there?
Yes, yes.
So you can come in either way, you can go through the center, use those dumpsters or go around the outer.
Right.
You know, that sounds good.
So additional capacity?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's in the RFP or requirement, but could we anticipate no interruption while they're under construction?
We've discussed it with David Magnet, just how we might coordinate that. It sounds like, you know, there might be a couple of brief windows of where they would need two days together, something like that. But otherwise, we would want to, we, they anticipate being able to do it, well, during site being open.
Gentlemen, any further questions? We have to authorize Mr. Ashcraft to be able to sign. Move and seconded.
What are we, what are we making a motion for him to do?
To be able to sign the contract.
For the entire.
This, oh, yeah, good point. What is before you is, and what you're authorizing right now is purely for evaluation and design. Now, that number is part of the project total hold. It has to be under $500,000 as part of their 425 to 450,000. But this design proposal and evaluation is a supplement part of that project, and that's what you're approving right now.
I'm looking at design 55,000. Is that what?
Yes, and then five percent to Gordian on top of that.
Where do we anticipate this funding coming from?
Right now, we've got 400,000 set aside or that we, that you approved in the budget for capital. And then we would be coming back to ask for more out of the either proffers or on assigned fund for the remainder.
Mr. Hodges, you good?
I'm good.
So it's been moved and seconded. Ms. Branch?
Mr. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Chairman Moore.
Aye. And Mr. Hodges, right on into our financial solid list.
We brought it up to your attention probably a year ago, haven't talked about it much. But the 10-year agreement with VIPSa is coming due. And if there are any questions about continuing the agreement, this will be for another 10 years. I know there was some concern just about term length. But it was also, it was brought to our attention when we brought this up with David Magnet, that the term used to be 20 years. It's been cut to 10. There are certain considerations to be made with some of the other agreements within the VIPSa agreement for shortening it, but if that is a priority for the board, then we could see where we could go with it.
Is, Mr. Chairman, if I may, is a 10-year term, is that pretty much what other counties are doing?
That's what all the other counties are doing.
So they reduce it to 10 years.
Yes, and all the other counties are considering the same thing. They all come do it at the same time.
We kind of know.
I think it's, I'll have to look again. I can't be sure if it's.
Several years, I think.
I've read it once and now it's, I've drawn a blank on it, so I'm sorry.
All right. If the others are interested, you should be there any minute.
Okay, sure.
What practical alternatives are there? Have you researched at all?
Whenever we have discussed it or brought up, what are the other options with David Magnet? He said there's basically only waste management. And he said there all their prices are going up more than his and their sites are worse.
That's what he says.
That's what he says. But I would remind the board that VIPSa is they're not a firm that's making money. They're they're made up of our county staff, the other county staff.
Yes.
Yeah, and I mean, same could be said for the library, but on the other hand, we have a lot more interaction with that staff.
Do we evaluate them in any way?
We do. The board, Mr. Ashcraft, as a member of it.
The director is an annual evaluation. Usually operations with his manager that comes up.
Do you see a section here, you were asking about termination, section seven point one says termination agreement may be terminated by either party heretofore upon 18 months prior written notice to.
Thank you, Mr. Greenwood.
I knew I'd seen it too.
I've read it, but I didn't want to say it wrong.
Did anybody else have problems with the oil or something? Do they take?
The others, you mean the other counties?
The other sites.
I, I think they're all having a problem. I think that site was just the worst because that was where most people had come. But he, he was saying that they used to have three vendors that would come and pick up oil and now it's only one. The others tripled their price.
So we're changing our oil and y'all know.
We just need those new cars.
All right, anything else, Mr. Hodges? All right, thank you.
Oh. Did we vote?
I know we didn't vote.
Yeah, what do we need to do?
Yeah.
Go ahead and, even though it's not due until one July of next year?
Right, but he is asking for localities. I think King William already passed theirs. To go ahead and, we can wait, but.
It doesn't sound like there's a lot of options.
Yeah.
Either way.
It would make it easier for them if we made our decision earlier.
This is again, a little out there, but with our anticipated growth, is this going to cover us? Is there anything we can anticipate having to modify at some later date?
Not their service.
Expansion of the central garage and keep the other sites as is.
Because it's, it's up to us how we want those sites to be run. He's basically setting the staff for it, hours and the rates. And when he sets that, he's bringing it to the board of VIPSa to approve it. So if we want more days, we say we want more days. If we have another site, we say we want another site.
I don't know, Mr. Chairman, I think the same way I am, but some of the proposals for expanded residency in the county. It's going to be a big demand and still in that area.
And that's part of what the solution, thinking about how we might coordinate better with Fworth, if there's any way to open that site up as well. I know it's a little bit further away, off the beaten path a little bit. But if we can relieve anything and really make the central garage site as efficient as possible for all the homeowners businesses right there, that's what we're going to try and do.
That site also needs some improvement to, with increased traffic there. That could be, that could be a real problem.
The turn is really tricky.
It is.
In and out of there.
If you go there, when they are busy and they are changing the dumpster, traffic is also back up onto Fworth Road. And it's dangerous, actually, anyway.
There's a blind hill there. Familiar with it. Okay, well, someone like to make a motion? So, Mr. Jim? Move and second, Ms. Branch?
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski.
Aye.
Chairman Moore.
Aye. Ms. Brown. Talk about the 23 budget amendment, state comp board salary increases.
Good evening. Happy birthday to one of our board members, I understand. Resolution twenty-two dash seventy is brought before the board tonight for consideration of amendments of the FY 2023 budget regarding the state compensation board funding to King William County. The approved FY 23 budget includes a two and a half, I'm sorry, 2% merit and 1.5% COLA increase for staff of constitutional officers excluding the constitutional officer. Staff under, staff under the constitutional officer receive annual performance evaluations to determine the merit increase for each individual. Salary scales for constitutional officers are determined by the state comp board. Comp board funds are then allocated to localities based on need, priority and requests from officers. Each local government has the discretion to supplement additional funding to the constitutional office. County administrations go with the presented amendment to FY 23 budget. County administrations goal with the presented amendment to FY twenty-three budget is to utilize the additional funding from the comp board. To reduce taxpayers dot take taxpayer dollars going toward constitutional offices with exception of three offices. With circumstances that want salary increases. The three offices are the circuit court clerk. There's a five percent increase for the clerk position supported one hundred percent by the comp board. No additional funds from the locality, the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office. Both Mr. Kite and Sheriff Walton fall under a. Provision of chapter eight two two twenty twelve acts of assembly related to VRS. Both Mr. Kite and Sheriff Walton were in service in twenty 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 twelve. Um that wants us to present, give, increase their salaries by five percent. Um, Mr. Kite's office, we need to increase the deputy Commonwealth's Attorney position. Currently, we received forty thousand dollars from the state for V stop grant. Um, so we have to match that forty plus whatever the comp board is giving to us to get her to that salary. That's mu- one hundred percent state money. The sheriff's office, uh again, we we are needing to give Sheriff Walton five percent because of his service since two twenty twelve. The comp board is granting the county additional funds to support entry level salary of sworn deputies. In addition to that, the comp board is giving additional funds to the county to support salary compression within sheriff's office. With the increase increase listed above, the net impact to King William County supplement versus comp board reimbursement is. Four thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars more in revenue for the general fund. This reduces the taxpayers' contribution to constitutional offices. Staff recommends approval of resolution two two dash seven zero.
Any questions of Ms. Brown? Ms. Brown, the uh. There's a statement here, two percent merit, one point five cola. Does this include a cola for the treasurer and commissioner?
No, that was just for the the staff of those, the the constitutional offices.
And the. Comp board, state comp board, do they offer colas?
No, no, not with this. Reimbursement cycle, not to say they won't in the next few years, but right now, no, it's just what they've sent to us is five percent increase for this fiscal year. Plus in FY twenty-four also, we've already been notified that's with on the agenda for them.
So the two officers don't get a pay decrease, but neither do they get a pay increase.
That's correct. The county just absorbs that money into what we currently supplement those two offices. And it reduces the taxpayers' uh contribution to those two offices.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash seventy.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion?
Well, I'll I'll go ahead and and chat about this uh for a little while. I I I'd like. To at least maybe consider a caller for those two offices, since they would be the only two currently. The only two positions in the entire county, at least as we have it, I think it would not be getting any increase this year. We did, uh, you know, at least one and a half dollar this year.
Yes, since we. Made a motion and properly seconded, we do have to vote on this this resolution prior to.
Or we could amend it, I'm just taking advantage of my pretending. I'm sorry.
You got there before me.
You know, um.
The inflation rate was considered.
Right. Um, and we do know that the comp board has already been notified that they're coming through another five percent next year, which would, I think at that point in time. Could viably eliminate the supplement and still give them a bump next year, the way things sit, if I'm doing the math right. So it'd be something along those lines. So it would be uh. Modest this year, and then next year, we could let the comp board pick up the entirety of that and then roll on from there and just leave it be the comp board problem there.
Can you repeat? What you're talking about.
I I would propose for the treasurer and the commissioner, who currently would be the only position that did not get any increase this year, doing the. The at least the one point five percent that we had done for cost of living adjustment. Um but by leaving whatever needs to be left in there in the in the King William County supplement, uh which would still, I think, reduce overall, reduce our contribution. From the county supplement side, then the idea would be next year, since the comp board has already said, they're basically just mirroring what the state's done. For pay raises over the biennium, which is another five percent next year, uh we can then let that just kind of roll off at that point in time. But and I, the math that I did is all on an envelope at the at the shop, but it should at that point in time amount to another. Increase for both of those offices, but we could then completely devolve county supplement to those offices from then on.
How did we arrive at this? Well, you were, you were speaking of merit. So basically, this is where we are, correct?
Yeah, uh the first, yeah, the first section will tell you what we currently have been, that what has been approved with the uh merit and the cola for just their staff. And merit, um there is a performance evaluation within our county um comp plan. Um, and that's part of the, it ties, their merit performance evaluation ties to that two percent. Not everyone that works in county administration received that full two percent. It it's based on performance.
So this is in your recommendation, this resolution is in alignment with that.
This resolution would not give any increase to the com- the commissioner of revenue or the treasurer.
What I mean, what I mean is in alignment with your valuation of the physical performance, the. Of of those offices?
No, 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 we did not try to evaluate their office.
And that again, that's why I I I my recommendation would be just the one point five percent that we gave as as the cost of living adjustment, not proposing that we. Yeah, try to evaluate the the officers in that situation, but just give give the color that we gave everybody else.
Just, that's in discussion. We do have something about this particular thing, closed session should be to be. Thinking about this, if we maybe talk about something else later.
Should we wait until?
We think that's. I think we have, if we A have time to wait, B.
Okay, we'll go ahead and table this resolution for now. Pending our closed session discussion.
We'll probably come back to that.
Yes.
We're good. All right, well, I'll go ahead and make a motion to be tabled because I think parliamentary listeners need to, so I'll make a motion to be tabled.
We already made a motion and probably seconded, I thought we had to vote.
And I'm just gonna speak up that it's effective August first, so Nita would need to know, so. Or we'll have to do retroactive pay because she does process like within this next.
So we need it Saturday night, but we've got.
Can can we approve it like it is?
He said a substitute motion, we can make that.
If we wanted to come back.
I I didn't. I'll withdraw my motion, how about that?
Okay, motion withdrawn.
Okay.
May I have a new motion?
I'll move that we table resolution twenty-two dash seventy.
Move and second it, Ms. Branch?
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moskowski. Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Chairman.
Hi. Okay, Ms. Brown, this is the man for social services positive amendment.
Okay, resolution twenty-two dash seventy-one is presented to the board tonight for consideration to amend the previous FY twenty-three budget. That was presented to the board with information obtained from the local D S F office. Following a meeting in which King William County Finance joined a meeting with representatives of state social service, it was determined that. Amending would be, would be needed to be brought, to bring, what, let me see, determined that amendment would need to be brought forward to the Board of Supervisors. The largest factor in this determination was that the local budget should match state allocation budget. The state allocation budget included a five percent salary increase for local so- social service staff. This will require no additional funds from the locality with the revised budget that reflects the state budget. Staff recommend approval of resolution twenty-two dash seven one.
So you said no.
What's that?
No additional.
No additional funding, um there's a now clear understanding that what was presented. Presented by local D S S to the board did not match with what the state budget was going to be. So our numbers were higher than, so it all ended up washing out in the end.
So that's because we never saw that before.
That's correct, yeah, um this was the first time that uh county finances ever received that budget allocation from the state. So um now, moving forward, we will stay in touch with the state regarding any budget adjustments. Because they do make budget adjustments to um state and fed shares throughout the year, almost like monthly, I would say. But what we intend to do now is move forward every time we see something. County Board of Supervisors is going to be made aware that we receive additional funding either from feds or state with either. X amount for local share or no local share. End of day, is there not to spend it unless our county board is appropriated? It doesn't matter who's going to be the funding source.
We have learned a lot.
We're just matching our link.
That's it.
So I I'll move approval of resolution twenty-two dash seventy-one.
Move and second it, Ms. Branch?
Mr. Moskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Chairman Warren.
Thanks, Ms. Brown, one last, public elections budget amendment?
One last, one's resolution twenty-two dash seventy-two is presented this evening for board's consideration to amend FY twenty-three budget lines. Related to the electoral board and general registrar's office, the department of elections has notified King William County of a five percent increase in funding and salary. For the position of general registrar and the electoral board. This will require no additional funds from the general fund. The additional re- reimbursement from the state will cover the increase in salaries. That recommends resolution twenty-two dash seventy-two.
Mr. Chair, I'm make a motion if we approve resolution twenty-two dash seventy.
Second.
Move and second it, Ms. Branch? Anybody like to discuss? Ms. Brown?
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moskowski.
Hi.
Chairman Warren.
Hi. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, sure. Saw you making the move, I'm gonna stop you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity. So again, I'm 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 back before you, I have to talk about our starting salaries for our deputies. As you well know, we, you, the board funded six positions last year. Uh and have not been able to fill those positions. And I've, we we've kicked around so many ideas to figure out what we can do to draw people into this, and the bottom line is. We need to up the salary. You know, I'm competing with localities around us that pay much more than we do. And. Even localities that you wouldn't think would pay as much or pay more than we are. We are. Our starting salary right now as of this moment is forty-two thousand five, that's the starting salary. West Point starting salary for their police officers, forty-two eight, not much, but it's more. Uh King Queens at forty-three thousand. Middlesex is at forty-six thousand, and then we go up from there, Gloucester's forty-eight, Carolina's forty-eight. And of course, New Kent and Hanover at fifty-three, and I know we can't compete with Hanover, and I'm not trying to compete with them. But I am trying to do something to keep our guys here and to attract new folks to uh to King William. So, and I'm not asking for any additional money tonight, so I'm gonna tell you that upfront. Uh I have crunch numbers, pushed numbers. Moved numbers around, um I'm blind with numbers right now, but. What I'm asking the board to do is to change our starting salary to forty-seven five. And puts us within the ballpark of some of our agencies around us and and maybe keep some folks from looking elsewhere and to start looking here. And and to do that. Uh, of course, we'd have to do something with the compression, so this would add to the compression. And to to fix all of this, we would need additional sixty-nine thousand dollars uh to do this. Now, and that's this fiscal year.
Exactly, during the compression also.
That's during the compression also. And I told you I don't need any extra money because I've got some vacancy savings, and by the end of September, I will save on these vacant positions I haven't been able to fill. Seventy-eight thousand dollars. So I've got the money there to make this happen. And I know you're gonna say, well, what about next year? Well, we're anticipating that five percent from the comp board next year to offset that. And the only thing I'll be asking you for next year is let the guys get their merit increase that they would normally get. Uh. And we do evaluations in our office on all of our employees. Uh, you know, my guys are really working really hard right now. We are short staff, trying to keep up with the call volume. Doing all the things that that we do on a normal basis, but we're just getting further and further behind. You know, if one deputy goes out sick, you're not gonna have somebody to cover that shift. I had a deputy last week worked seventy-four hours, working his shift, plus the next shift over because we were short. So that's twenty-six hours of overtime. That we've got to cover. I I'm just, we're just digging a hole here unless I can fill this uh these positions. And and the only way I know at this point is is to increase the salary. You know, we've looked at alternatives, but everything has a cost to it. You know, what would attract someone to come to King William? You know, if. It 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 just about anything we want to do is gonna cost money. But this is, this, I think, you know, guys coming into the profession there aren't like years ago, they're not just coming into because I wanna help my neighbor. That that's a generational thing, it's 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 fading. I wanna help my neighbor, but I wanna get paid to help my neighbor. I wanna pay, get paid a lot. We can't pay a lot, but I certainly think we can pay enough to compete, uh at least at the bottom end of that, with our neighbors. So that's what I'm asking you to do is, you know, help uh help me, help us to to get folks in here and to keep folks. You know, the dangers out here in rural King Way County are no different from either Richmond, just asking Deputy Charles City if that bullet felt any soft to hit them. Then if they were enriched. The dangers are real, no matter where you are.
What is New Kent, um not, you can't hang with them, but.
New Kent went to fifty-three thousand. And I was at fifty-three thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars. So.
So really, you can hang with like the thing.
Yeah.
But do they also have a problem retaining deputies? Who's that, New Kent? Or or these other local?
I think New Kent is pretty fully staffed at this point. I talked to the sheriff over there a few weeks ago, and I think they're fully staffed.
I'm thinking New Kent, especially the lower part, their revenue increases are phenomenal compared to everyone else. They're growing.
Of course, everywhere across the spectrum in law enforcement today is is having a harder time drawing people into the profession. And that's just because of the the atmosphere for the last few years. Nothing we can do about that, we're just trying to move on and. Do the best we can, but to do that, we need good qualified people to to fill the boots to put that on the street.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, so you mentioned you have two openings that you're not gonna fill this year?
No, 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 I have, I have openings that I haven't been able to fill, and because of that.
But you were saying that part of this was, or part of the money needed for the rest of this year.
So, so I've already gone through July with a vacancy. August, probably September, even if I was to hire someone through the process, they wouldn't ever start till October first. Just three months of vacancy of savings in that salary that we're not using.
This year will be a lot.
This year.
Next year, we have to worry about some coming up behind.
Sure. Sure, but we'll cover some of that.
Yes, sir. But that officer that worked the seventy-four hours of overtime, he's still gonna be working, if if you don't fill those positions.
We're still working our folks to death, right, we really are.
It's not a safe environment, it's not.
And and you know, as the court's schedule has gotten really busy. We, we thought in COVID, there would things would would straighten up after that, but they've just gotten busier. And and I've gotta pull some folks who work the shift in to help the court, so therefore they're getting longer hours. But I've gotta have people on the street, or someone is sick, I've gotta have somebody to cover that shift.
Yeah, can you give us a lag on the overtime pay?
I'm sorry?
Can you give us a a guess on the overtime pay?
On where we are spending that? So we probably, probably average about sixty, about sixty-seven thousand dollars a month in overtime.
And is that eating up part of your non-fulfillment of it?
Well, that's eating up our overtime budget pretty quickly, yeah.
But so far, you haven't went into the salaries of the, uh.
Not yet, no, no.
But you can't really count on that, correct? Because trying to hire someone, you try to have the money there.
Sure, a- and so I don't wanna go too far into that, but, uh, even if I hire someone new, I'm still gonna have an overtime issue until I get those folks through the academy, trained and back here unless we get certified officers who are ready to come to work.
I'm sorry, what time is that, three months, four months?
That's about four months. By the time we get them through the academy, and they have to go through field training and get them back on the street by themselves.
Good. You have to pay them up.
Well, they're paid, you're right, they're paid their entire time.
That you can.
Yes.
Have you talked to Ms. Brown about where the money might come from?
Well, like I said, I, 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 you know, we, we said that in, in talk about this, I've got the money in the budget, like I said, for, for this year. And next year.
I'm talking about recovery.
Well, what, once, well, you know, the comp board wants that money is here, it's here, so that'll be carried on through. Then after that, it'll just be your normal cost of living raises, you know. We're gonna have to come back and address this in a few years, it's, it's gonna change again. The, the salaries are gonna go up, and we either, we, we've got it somehow, now the King Williams got to figure out a way to keep up with the pace and salaries rather than setting a salary and leaving it like that until we get to a point where we're playing catch-up. I mean, we're split forty-two, and it, it was, you know, there's a big difference between forty-two and forty-six, and middlesex count, middlesex.
We talked briefly, uh, recently about non-monetary incentives. Personal property taxes, real estate taxes, et cetera, et cetera.
Real income.
It's probably not a very good incentive for a new, young.
They, they're looking for the, the total amount, what they're gonna make.
Want that paycheck.
Yeah.
Cause if they're living at home, rolling your paycheck.
Right, of course, enough of my, my employees live outside of the county, cause they wanna, they wanna live here. So they move outside or live outside of county, so they wouldn't get any benefit from that.
But you had to do that just to maintain.
To track people, yes.
And that's, that's what the most counties out there.
I see three, three Hanovers Deputy Sheriff's cars go by my house every, every day.
There's one that, it's, it's a couple of them living in King William.
Yeah, yeah, there's one of them on Infield Road, for sure. So, you know, you got Hanover County right next door, just doing lateral transfers. If a certified officer meets their qualification and he's ready to go, then he just slides right over, doesn't have to go through any academy or anything like that. State police are doing the same thing right now, again. And that draws some of the localities, it's the same, well, draws from the same pool of people.
How many have you lost to Hanover?
I haven't lost any to Hanover. Uh, other jurisdictions to, uh, west, well, lost one to West Point, two to West Point.
Marine police.
What's that?
Marine police.
Marine police, lost two to Marine police.
Well, plus, you're just talking about resignations. We're not taking into account people who don't even look, people who look at what we're offering, looking at what New Kent's offering, don't even come and talk to you.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. And, and if, if you look at the social media, we put out on our social media, we're looking for, you know, someone to fill a position, post a salary out there, and people laugh at us. I'm not gonna pin a badge on for forty-two thousand dollars, five, about forty-two five hundred dollars a year.
I'm not on the road, I hear the deputies coming back from the academy and they'll be talking to people. And, and they ask what our salary is, and they say, oh, no, I can't go over that.
Well, I think the State Police Academy a couple of weeks ago graduated eighteen people.
That's right. So that was twenty, twenty-nine.
Eighteen is not many for them.
Not for the entire Commonwealth.
Gentlemen, just to, for any discussion, I, I, I gotta say, and, and, you know, I'm supportive of the sheriff, and I do work there, but you gotta think, prior departments gonna be standing in line.
Prior departments, you know, they're in a pretty good position right now compared to the deputies, you gotta, you gotta say.
I think.
But the, the fact of the matter, and my point is pointing out the State Police Academy issue, is that, you know, this is a, this is a labor shortage issue. It's what it is, it's a lack of people that are coming into the profession, and it's not gonna go away, so this is.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think that we just equalize the, the starting pay between the, the.
Yeah.
Fire and EMS and the Sheriff's Department.
The captains.
Oh, I thought it was.
No, 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 this, this current proposal gets closer to where we are with starting fire and. Uh, so I think, I think we're all, I think we're all appear agreeing in long form here. Uh, so, you know, I, I would, I would go ahead and say that, uh, I would make a motion then that we.
Let me ask one more question.
Sure.
What, for the compression issues, what, what kind of percentages are we looking at? Would it just, from whatever forty-two five is to, I'm sorry, forty-seven five, that percentage would be used in the compression ratios?
Yes.
But we, we did not vary, sure, depending on their time, the rate.
No, no, the way I figured was the, the same amount that would go for the, on the starting salary to raise it to that level, would go to the same thing to address the compression. So everyone would get the same amount.
Right.
But they're all in different stages of their salary because of their years of service now.
And maybe sixty-nine.
In fact, sixty-nine K.
I, I, I figured all that in there, yes, sir.
That's not free.
No. But like I say, I, I'm saving as of now seventy-eight thousand, I only need sixty-nine thousand for that, so any, any extra that comes up, we should have. And that's wishful thinking, that's, if they said I'm gonna fill all six positions by the end of, yeah.
So if we're gonna increase the starting salary by five thousand, and you're gonna, everybody's gonna get that raise, how does, how does that math work? To, to sixty-nine?
It's not five thousand.
Oh, it's not?
No, sir.
Okay, I thought it was forty-two five to forty-seven five?
That's starting, but we don't have.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, I was, I was looking at the numbers and y'all put that on hold, I was looking at the numbers that, um, Ms. Brown had, had presented to you earlier. So yes, you're right, but I would take into account the numbers that, that's already been comp board and all that stuff on this. Uh, so this is above that. So above that would be, uh, twenty-three seventy-five additional per deputy.
Okay, have we, what's the action on this?
Well, and that was gonna be my next question, we don't have this attached to a resolution or anything. Are we looking for authorization for you guys to move forward and, and put together a, the budget resolution?
The work session? And that's with his, his authority to do that within his department, I assume?
That, well, that would.
Again, we, make sure we don't need a formal resolution to move on this.
Yeah, but it does not change the budget.
Can we get a nod?
Well, then a motion, no, I'll make a motion, I'll, I'll make an A, a motion to accept the sheriff's.
So long as the numbers are right. So we're sure that.
I won't come back to you and ask for additional money.
Are we sure that the numbers that you presented are correct?
If it isn't, I'm gonna. I, I have worked these numbers for, for a week now.
Okay, so yes, the answer is yes.
Well, now, you heard what I asked you minutes ago, it doesn't include the, the percentage of VRS, that's correct.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion, second, any further discussion? Ms. Brett?
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Carver.
Hi.
Mr. Spolsky.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Moore.
Hi, good luck, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, uh, that action might require at a later time the board having to amend the pay classification scale.
Sure, I knew there was something.
Yeah, we're just not prepared to give you those ranges tonight, but, uh, when you see it, you'll, you'll understand with the reaction, the interaction.
Okay.
Fair enough. Mr. Chair, one last thing, that we preached is not affect me.
Who else does it matter? Is all the, the court, uh?
It's a whole division.
Division.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Ashcraft, you're up.
Mr. Chairman, you have my, uh, report this, this evening, and, uh, it is an amended report from when I sent it to you a week ago. We've added a few items. Uh, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail unless the board has any questions about any of that. But I would like to just highlight a couple of things that I think are of importance. Uh, if you notice on the back of my report originally, or, or in the packet, there's a flyer for civilian response and, and casualty care. That is, uh, another way of, uh, of addressing an active shooter, uh, situation and, and in a more comprehensive way. Uh, this will be offered to our employees, uh, on September the seventh, and it will be mandatory that they take this, uh, this course if, uh, if it doesn't conflict with something that has to be done. And we've also opened it to the public. Uh, there's two sessions, one from eight to noon, the other from one to five. And there's registration information that's on the flyer. We've had that, I believe, on our website and other places. So, uh, we just want you to know that we're staying on top of safety, uh, and understanding that, uh, that these things happen everywhere in our country, and, uh, we don't wanna be immune to, at least be prepared when something like this happens.
Opening it up, I have to ask, at fifty-one years in this business, no, you're not gonna do any kind of checks on anybody coming from outside.
Any thought from the organizers?
They have their problem. If you're, if you're, if you're involved with, where they have.
That makes it different. I mean, we're all involved in public places, we're in one this evening. I don't, if somebody wanted to come in, I guess, and, uh, and cause problems, we certainly could, but.
You're probably not gonna get background check.
Yeah.
About something.
Yeah.
Oh, you're talking about the plan?
Yeah, the plan itself, yeah. Do you know how many of the public have responded yet?
Yeah.
Just, so employees are basically, right now, our employee bases is all that's registered.
Do we have access to those data, databases where you can get a preliminary background check in seconds? There's so many various, there's so many levels that you can dig into. Do we subscribe, or does the state have anything?
Those are run through the sheriff's office right now, aren't they?
Sure.
Okay.
It's something we do internally, we want to pay extra and all that, if we wanna go that route.
There, there's some private ones out there, but I don't know how much they put in.
They're pretty good.
Their databases, you know.
They're real good.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of other things, um, you received a presentation a couple of weeks ago for Habitat Humanity. I believe it was part of a, uh, a joint meeting that we had. And they, uh, they said they were gonna be more active in the, in the county. They purchased property at eleven three fifty-three West River Road as a site for its next house. And they're, they, they need to demolish the structure that's on there now, and maybe do some, uh, site work around it to expand a lot, but uh, they're looking for anybody, developers and contractors who might help with that effort. As you know, they're a not, not-for-profit organization. Uh, they can, uh, contact Habitat directly if anyone is interested. Uh, the new welcome signs have been installed, uh, I, I hope that, uh, they meet the public's expectations. We received some pretty good feedback. Uh, the entry points, uh, will be placed, or the mulch has been placed at some of those. And, uh, we're also looking to plant flowers, uh, at a later time. I wanna congratulate, uh, Fire and EMS, uh, they received a grant of over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for SCBA gear that will be shared with town of, uh, of West Point and their volunteers. And Mango Hick already had purchased, uh, uh, SCBA equipment, so that's why they're not included in this particular grant. And then, uh, coming at the heels of that was a donation from West Rock of ten thousand dollars to assist West Point with a, with an ambulance in which they are going to, uh, to purchase.
And that equipment was out there, you're pretty much correct.
That's correct. We had made it known early in the week, I'll reiterate it this week, that HRSD has, uh, estimated that, uh, completion date for the wastewater treatment plant is now the end of calendar year twenty-twenty-five. It was, it was originally, uh, a year earlier than that, and they moved it to March. And now it's, uh, uh, at the end of, uh, twenty-twenty-five, I think that's a pretty solid number, given all the information that they have in place right now. And they have, uh, pledged their commitment that everything that has been submitted, um, in the planning stages over the last few years, they feel comfortable that they can continue to keep, uh, uh, that moving. Uh, it's, uh, anything that's outside of their service area or anything that might be new that would be, uh, uh, of size, they might have trouble with that leaving into twenty twenty, twenty twenty-six, I guess, is what it will be, so. Um, King William School's open today, uh, we certainly wanna wish, uh, all the teachers, parents, kids, uh, uh, a good, a good school year. And, uh, I think, Mr. Chairman, that would probably complete everything, uh, unless the board has any questions. I said there's other things contained in the report.
Enunciation of this, Tivas?
Yes, uh, uh, Amanda Teva, uh, Tivas, that's right. Uh, she, uh, she was a former mem, uh, former, uh, employee here at Social Services. Uh, she left an assistant's position to go to Westmoreland County for, uh, uh, to be the director up there. Uh, she is now going to return as our director of Social Services as of October the first. And as soon as she, uh, gets settled in, I'll certainly bring her for everyone to, uh, most people have met her, if they've been around for a while, but uh, we're very happy and excited to see that piece, uh, starting to come together there.
She's a resident captain?
Yeah, that's correct.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We can start with the, uh, Board of Supervisor comments, if you would.
Thank you, everybody, for coming, this, they had fairly large, uh, can't tell many people, oh, it looks like fourteen. Just moving forward. Thanks, everybody. Happy birthday, Father.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah, uh, first of all, I'd like to recognize Robert Hardwood and Strong Robinson. After our last meeting, uh, two members now at the end here, we tabled the funding for the Raiders organization. Uh, the next day, Mr. Robinson reached out to Nestle, and they donated the twenty-five hundred dollars that we were looking for. Uh, he called Mr. Ashcraft and informed him of it, and Mr. Ashcraft told him, well, we have another problem now. Part of the project was to be to level that plain field, and it was, uh, some field on, on site. That was applied and leveled, and it contained glass contaminants and, and, and other, there was other issues with it. And, uh, Strong Robinson immediately said he would take care of it. He loaded up a piece of equipment, and he took it to site, he removed the, the dead, uh, field, uh, applied the new, leveled it. Uh, Robert Hardwood supplied the, the seed, and I think the fertilizer, if I'm not mistaken. As we speak, the grass is growing. These are the two newest members of the EDA, and I'm very proud of, to step up to the plate like that. They, they heard what we had to say that night, and they fell to knee. Also, the, uh, real estate auctions that, that we've been waiting for, for a long time, they have, they will officially open bidding on the first set of those parcels, September the first, first, I think it's through the sixteenth. Uh, you can, I think their website is W W dot B A auction dot com. And you can, you can go on there and look at those parcels. And, uh, it's just a drop in the bucket, I think it's only like fifteen or sixteen of them. Uh, I participated in one a couple of months ago that, uh, King and Queen had. And by the day of the auction, all of them had been, all of the tax bills have been redeemed except for them. So a lot of that happens with these auctions. But anyway, once again, kudos to you guys for doing what you did, thanks a lot.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Hodges?
I have a whole lot of things you're about to come. No matter what side of the fence you're on, dealing with anything that you come to here that you express it. And you have that open dialogue. Thanks. Took that. The, uh, and in town, they have done the press as far. And it looks good. It almost looks like brick. I couldn't tell it hardly. It's smooth right there. At the birthday and he's half my age.
Mr. Miskalski?
Uh, nothing much more than a reflection of the passage of time, Mr. Chairman. I started this, uh, this job. The twenty-five-year-old, uh, young'un and now a thirty-six-year-old with two school-aged children. My youngest daughter started kindergarten today, so, uh.
You just told everybody how old.
So, uh, grateful, uh, grateful and horrified of the passage.
Just wait, there's more. Yeah, let me add my congratulations with the and, uh, I can't, uh, can't express enough gratitude for the staff, county staff, put together the farmers market. I think it was, again, a big success. Uh, stopped by for a little bit, people anywhere, old friends, new friends. And, uh, I challenged Mr. Ashcraft to figure out how we're going to continue doing this and where. I think it's, uh, I think everybody is going to come to expect it. Whether we can do it through the winter, probably not, but certainly in spring and summer, we need to figure this out. And Mr. Robinson, Mr. Harwood, thank you for your contributions. I'm looking forward to that whole effort to gain more success and help our community. If I could, uh, get a motion to convene a closed meeting?
Chair, I move we convene in closed meeting in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight three of the Code of Virginia regarding the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, for public purpose. The discussion in an open meeting may adversely affect the bargaining position of negotiating strategy of the board in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight eight of the Code of Virginia to consult legal counsel specifically about the board's authority and a supplemental salary of the trade.
Motioned and properly seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Branch?
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Miskalski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Chairman Warren.
Aye. With that, we're going to convene in a closed meeting. I don't know how long this is going to be, folks, so, uh, you're welcome to stay.
Mr. Chair, I move we reconvene in an open session.
Say. Motion and seconded, Ms. Branch?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chair, I move S R one.
Say yeah.
S R one, motion seconded, Ms. Branch?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chair, I move that we pick up resolution, uh, twenty-two dash seventy off the table.
So, may seconded, Ms. Branch?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chair.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Hodges, you recognize?
Mr. Chair, I moved to approve resolution twenty-two seventy day dash R. Amendment to King William County Fiscal Year twenty twenty-three budget appropriating state compensation board salary increases. Whereas the King William County Board of Supervisors wishes to amend its fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget to reflect the additional revenue and expenses related to state compensation board five percent salary increase. Now, the I F O A gave resolve that King William County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize and appropriate the following increases of funds than twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three budget since line increases as follows, which money shall be expended for purposes authorized and approved by the Board of Supervisors. Funding, general fund expenditures, ninety-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-one additional department salaries in fringe, and that will be different. It'd be a different figure for that, as you'll see when I break it down. Breakdown is, uh, forty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-eight for the circuit court clerk, ten thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight for the Commonwealth attorney, seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and five for the sheriff, one point five percent increase for the commission of revenue, zero percent for the treasury. General fund revenues. And these figures, I I'm going to read them, but they'll be different. Ninety-six thousand nine hundred and fifteen additional anticipated funds to offset constitutional officer salary supplement from the King William County, reducing taxpayer contribution to the constitutional office done this the twenty-second day of August twenty twenty-two.
Say.
We have motion to pass resolution twenty-two seventy R, properly seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Branch?
Aye.
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 Aye. And gentlemen, pending any further discussions or questions, comments, may have a motion adjourned.
Say.
Made, properly seconded, Ms. Branch?
Aye.
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 Thank you all.
Bye, gentlemen.
All right, it's good to see you.